All right, we're back. Welcome back, everybody, and we're gonna go ahead and start with Eric. I read this morning.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good, how about you?
Oh, no complaints. Well, I have, I'm gonna share my screen here. Let me know if this works.
Yeah, it works.
It works. Great, well, my name's Eric Stephens, I am the Conservation Director for Great Peninsula Conservancy, and I am here to talk to you today about our Tohuia River project. So just, excuse me, just a little background, I think you all are familiar with our work, but Great Peninsula Conservancy is a nonprofit land trust. We are working in all of Kitsap, the west side of Pierce County, and then in Mason County as well, mostly in the Hood Canal watershed. So we are a nonprofit land trust who was founded by a conglomeration twenty years ago of four smaller land trusts. And we have successfully or been part of conserving over ten, eleven thousand acres of land since then. So we have three pillars that we kind of work under. The first is voluntary land acquisition, that's what I'm in charge of. This includes working with landowners on habitat. But we also work on farmland. We recently protected through a conservation easement one hundred and fifteen acres on the Cape Peninsula of prime farmland. We also do working forestland easements and work with landowners to protect their forests in perpetuity. We also have our kind of our second pillar is stewardship. So if we do own property and when we do own property, we manage that land and improve the habitat values on the on that property. And then our third pillar is environmental and conservation education. So creating the next stewards of the land through our programs. We work with a lot of middle schools, particularly underserved schools in area, and we're proud of our work on that part. I'm sorry, excuse me for one second, I had an emergency surgery with my dog and he's now... Sorry, give me, give me ten seconds here, I need to put his cone back on or else he's gonna rip his stitches out, I'm so sorry.
No worries, that's important.
I'm so sorry, yeah, he swallowed a small tennis ball and then it got stuck, yeah, so. Yes, so.
Oh, poor puppy.
Yeah, poor wallet too, pet insurance is certainly something I am going to look into in the future. Sorry, apologize for that. So our Tohuia River project is in the lower four miles of the Tohuia River. In terms of a watershed context, you'll see the dark green is the DNR Tohuia State Forest and then light green is is private working timberland. So it's the Tohuia River is one of the larger rivers on the east side of Hood Canal. And it is all within the glacial outwash area, and so there's there's a lot of sand and sediment that naturally occurs in this watershed. And I'll get into a little bit of that with some of the flooding and other issues that have happened with that. So as mentioned, our project is in the lower four miles. You'll see our project areas. Phase one is in yellow and green and then a future phase hopefully is the pinkish color. And we are all about voluntary land conservation, so working with landowners to see if they would be interested in selling their properties for appraised value. Or if they're not willing to sell, that's great too, because we can work with them on conservation easement. So this is, you know, these are voluntary agreements that are permanent, that protect certain values of the of the property. Most notably, usually it's it's an easement requires no subdivision and no further development of the of the property. So an easement works well with farmland and forestland as well. So and once we are successful in conserving land, we then look at floodplain restoration on these areas and I'll get into one of those in a little more detail in a little bit. So in general, the benefits, as you can well imagine, for salmon are quite large, particularly in this case, the Hood Canal summer chum, which there was a historic run in the Tohuia River. It was, it went extinct and they've been trying to bring back this this run with limited success and largely because of the sediment issues. So once, when the big floods come, there's a lot of gravel and sand that comes down the river. And once, and that's after the eggs have been laid usually, and then the there's either the property they get washed, the eggs get washed out of the reds or there is a lot of sediment that actually gets dumped on top of the reds. And that's what is, they believe is the the major issue with the restoring the run to this area. And it is also important geographically for Hood Canal because the more salmon, the more of the summer chum runs are established in different geographical areas, the more likelihood of the the species being delisted. So and the Tohuia River is one of those areas where if there was a good run, that would make the case for delisting the species. Obviously, there's good habitat for other species on with this project. Also groundwater recharge with our restoration, there'll be a lot more water that'll be sitting and then slowly percolating into the groundwater. Flood and sediment control with this restoration. And also, you know, all of our properties are open to the public. So there's definitely a lot of good opportunities for passive recreation on and getting down to the river with these projects. So phase one, we have recently, within the last month, purchased the the first of our properties. And this is the one hundred and forty-five acres located in the upper right, it's the it's the yellow shaded in the upper right area. This is, if you're familiar with the area, this was owned by the Neyhart family. And there was a large horse ranch which was quite contentious to some people in the floodplain. And we we were able to purchase the property from the estate. And we are now working with Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group to restore this area, it's got a mile of riverfront and half mile of excellent side channel habitat for for salmon. And it's it's one of the the top restoration opportunities in the watershed and we're super excited not only to improve the habitat on this property, but the restoration will actually help with salmon habitat downstream as well as as on the on the site and flooding issues and sediment issues downstream as well. So and so we're starting to work and reach out to landowners, the other landowners in shaded in green and yellow further downstream. And just to reiterate, we are a nonprofit and we only work with willing landowners. And, you know, we're flexible in terms of how we work with them in terms of purchasing property if they're willing or, you know, working with them on a on a conservation easement that works with them as well as as for for the habitat values that are on the property. And in terms of grants, we were awarded a Department of Ecology Streamflow Grant. So this was part of the larger, some of you may have been, I'm sure you were part of the 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 stream flow planning for Wire fifteen. This is a part of that, well, this separate, this was the grant. The every year they have a certain amount of funds, the state has a certain amount of funds to offset you know, non-exempt wells, so this was part of there. We received grant funding to purchase this one hundred and forty-five acres largely from the Department of Ecology Streamflow Program. We also have a salmon recovery funding board grant that's coming online, which will help a number of things, removal of structures on the property as well as restoration planning. And also to start working on acquisition of of some of the other parcels in green. And the last one that we was was a bit shocking for us to actually get, but the the state funded the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program at a record level this last biennium, and because of that, we were a, we've been able to get another grant for this project. This is the Riparian Grant, and I will discuss that a little bit in in the next slide or two. So just, you know, pictures are a thousand words. So this is the property that we purchased, you can see the old horse track. You can also see down the, at the bottom of the screen, there's there's a log jam and and me and a few other people down on the on the bank and this is, you know, the the river, when it floods, it really floods. Some of you probably seen it in in action and and this, the ability for, and you can see how flat this is, so you can see, you know, on a big flood, this is really, if we're able to disperse some of this water and and let it flow over this entire area, it's really gonna not only, you know, stop a lot of the water going down really fast, but also just start, you know, dropping sediments and it's really gonna improve habitat throughout. This is at about mile three point five up the river, so everything below that as well. So part of our the the Riparian Grant is as is to have jurisdictional conferral. And I have sent out to you a few emails regarding this. There is a slight update to what I've already sent out and and that is because of the the juggling of the different grants, we are proposing to add to the scope of the of the grant, two additional parcels. And these are the ones in yellow, so they're adjacent to the one that we have purchased already. And I think, and and the other ones that are that are either green or yellow are other ones that we are currently reaching out to landowners to see if they have interest in working with us. And we will provide you with, after this meeting today, I will email you with kind of an update of of what that the conferral looks like and ask for any comments or or additional questions that you have. But I I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you have now.
Great, oh, commissioners, any questions? Randy, I think you muted.
My computer's going slow, it's trying to mute that. So first of all, it always makes me sad when I hear any term of Neyhart Farms being considered, you know, counterproductive in any way, sense or form. That for me, I grew up around here, that's an important place there and they're far from it. I know there's always gonna be some people that don't like something, but they were a great addition to our community up there. It's one place you actually see horse crossing signs and stuff and and it is sad to me that it no longer exists because it was a beautiful thing to have for our community. But with that being put aside, I got two questions for you. I, three, one, I take your, you're talking about, you saying fee, you're talking about fee simple or some type of acquisition that way, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I, you know, I want to make sure no fees go on to try for the for the voluntary land conservancy, which we've entered into also on the larger scale, and there's different things where they pay in to do different things, I want to make sure we're not charging a fee. Second, is there any type of asset you're actually asking for us? And is there anywhere in this, anywhere, any type of plan or will I find anything in any of your documents that talks in any way about a forced or restriction forced acquisition of lands in the future?
Can you repeat the first part of that question?
The first one, is there any type of asset you're giving to us? What is your ask that you're asking us? Is this just informational or is there an ask? And the second question was, is there anywhere in your documentation that I'm gonna end up reading later on that says anything in the form of any type of forced or or regulatory? I'm using the word forced acquisition of lands out there and restriction of use of lands for these people that already live there.
Sure, good questions. So the the first is, as part of the grant, the Riparian Grant, we are required to seek your comment and feedback on our proposal and what we're proposing to do. And so we'd be happy to, you know, receive your comments and and, you know, if there's any concerns or questions that you have, I'm happy to answer them. That's just part of the the grant process and I think that's a wise thing that the state did in terms of making sure that, you know, everybody's informed and, you know, there is good conferral that happens. So as as mentioned, I will send out another email and you can certainly have some time to think about it and and, you know, provide comments back and and these will be forwarded, any comments or questions will be forwarded to the state level for their review as well. Second wise, we are a nonprofit, we don't have any jurisdictional power. We only work on with willing landowners. We we live and let live, you know, we 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 work across the spectrum of of every landowner that's out there from large timber owners to to small folks that are doing the best they can on the land that they have and and farmers and so I, yeah, so, you know, we we purchase land for appraised value, it's third party appraisal using, mostly using public funds and are, there's no force involved, there's no regulatory part of our work, it's all about acquisition. And, you know, coming to mutually agreeable you know, deals on either selling property or, you know, our conservation easements last in perpetuity. It's quite clear what they cover, what they don't. So I, I, yeah, I I hear you, I don't, but we are a nonprofit and there's there's none of that.
Yeah, but you do team up with Fish and Wildlife and other state agencies. I'm just asking if there's a plan out there where we're written to do anything like that, because that's the question I'm gonna have from my neighbors there. They're gonna ask me, are they planning to restrict access in other areas? Are they planning to make it so that we can't utilize our land because they're bringing this in here? I'm asking you for the longer, the greater three thousand, thirty thousand foot view. Are you, there any plans where you're working with Fish and Wildlife or anything to do that?
Not on any property other than what we own. So and and I say that because, you know, we will work with Fish and Wildlife and other departments on the restoration plans that we will work up with Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. But those are, you know, very specific to the the properties that we own or have an easement on or have a landowner agreement with on, so. Yeah, there's there's, yeah, I I don't see any way where we are going to impact neighboring landowners.
Well, Eric, all years I've been involved with the conservation type, I do believe this is the answer, this is how it should be done. When I first came in, it was a lot more pressure, bringing down values of land in order to acquire the lands, it was horrible. But I know this is one of the things I fought for with the Sound and Health Group, so we can now according to council, the different things, this is the answer, as long as it's only within your own ownership and you will, you know, acquire these things in order to protect them, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as we're not forcing down values or our ability to use other people's lands, I'm very supportive.
Thank you.
All right, great, great presentation, any further questions for Eric?
No, not for me, I think Christian Ireland had had good questions and always good to see Eric, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Eric, so we'll look forward to some further emails and, you know, keep us updated.
Will do. How would you like that?
Updates?
Yes.
Well, I guess it depends on what your present, what your, what the emails are, what you're presenting, if it's, you know, some some major changes, I would say, please get ahold of Mark and Mackenzie and and let's schedule another another briefing item. If it's, I would say if it's updates, commissioners, you can jump in at any time also, if there are updates that are pretty benign. Emails are perfect.
Okay, great.
I think we're we're all pretty responsive in our in our emails, so.
Not me. Yeah, I prefer the phone calls, but I haven't thought about having any other meetings out there for the community. I'm not sure that you actually need, I'm just wondering, it's always good for them to know that you don't have any of these. You have this meeting to tell what you do, but also to let them know that you have no desire to try and put new rules or impacts over the top of their community. Because I want to remind you, it was a few years back, Fish and Wildlife was looking to do something in the general area out there and there were a lot of restrictions and people wanted arms, they need to know that you're not that. Just my two cents of recommendation to you.
Very good point, thank you, we'll we'll look into that.
Always great to have community involvement in in decisions.
Absolutely.
And working with the Salmon Enhancement Group, I think that's cool.
Yeah, they're a good partner.
Good, good. All right, well, we have no further questions or comments, we appreciate your presentation and look forward to further further information.
Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
All right, take care of your dog.
Yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Bye.
All right, well, it looks like we're down, moving on down to Port of Allen and I see Larry and Judy in their room. How are you guys?
Hey, good morning.
Thank you.
Morning.
While we weren't sure the Zoom format, if you all met here or not, we felt it was important that we be here in person in case you were here. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. We're here to ask for a modification of the hundred thousand dollar ARPA grant contract that you previously approved for the ports well project. We're requesting this modification to the contract to allow the money to be used to help us purchase a well plus all the existing infrastructure of the Allen-Carry Water System. In reality, this makes more economic sense in drilling a new well for which the original ARPA funds were designated, so I'd like to explain why. First, we want to acknowledge that the port is aware you all approved this grant over other worthy applicants that you realize the importance of completing this project will have not only on the citizens of the Allen UGA, but you also realize the consequences of the port being unable to complete this project would have excuse me, on future property tax, sales tax and other revenues for the county. Those circumstances haven't changed. As you know, the port's water system is under a mandate from the Department of Ecology to bring a new well online by March first, twenty twenty-five. And those same economic factors that impact the county remain unchanged. The ARPA funding you approved was paired with a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Commerce for the drilling of the new well. However, when the opportunity to purchase the Allen-Carry Water System arose, we saw the ability to complete this project as much as a year sooner with much less environmental disturbance and without incurring any additional unbudgeted costs. And as public officials, I know you all are aware of the impact inflation has had on public projects and this project is no different. The Department of Commerce has already agreed to change in scope for the grant contract to allow for the purchase of the Allen-Carry system. Which is the same thing that we're asking for Mason County. The State Department of Health has encouraged a consolidation of our two systems for the past several years as well. We have come close to an agreement previously with the owners of the Allen-Carry system and it just didn't go together at the last minute two times. A brief history is really in order here. In the early two thousands, the Allen-Carry system and the port were competing against each other for a water right to serve the Allen UGA. Port paid for expedited permit processing and its mitigation plan was accepted over the Allen-Carry system's plan. So we were granted the right, the water right. And while the Allen-Carry system had drilled a significant well capable of serving the Allen UGA because both draw water from the same aquifer and the port was granted the water right, they were restricted to only being able to serve fourteen customers and draw a maximum of five thousand gallons per day from the aquifer. However, the Allen-Carry system continued to pursue its own water right and spent several years and a significant amount of money in support of that goal. They were intending to compete in the same service area as the port. However, in spite of their best efforts, because the port already had the water right, the Allen-Carry application was never acted upon by the state. The Allen-Carry well was originally drilled to service the Allen UGA and it will meet our needs along into the foreseeable future. Plus, it's capable of supplying more than double the number of connections our current well is licensed for. Also, our current well is already connected to approximately two thousand, two thirds of our licensed connections. The only holdups at this point are waiting for formal approvals from the State Department of Ecology and Health, although both have indicated in their preliminary reviews of our application, they will look favorably upon this as pump data from the Allen-Carry well informs to the terms of our water right and supports doing so. Ecology responded on Friday with some additional questions that our consultant will be addressing today, which should clear the final hurdles to this project for approval. The only other question is whether or not the land involved in the purchase, six developed lots, will have to undergo a cultural resources survey or not. However, we think not, since it should have had one prior to development. We're aware that the original ARPA money was scheduled to be drawn and spent on drilling the new well by the end of this year. While we can't predict any absolute time frame for completion of the project, should you approve the change in scope? Our goal is to have a purchase and sale agreement in place with Mr. and Mrs. Carey before the end of November, which would allow us to obligate these funds as originally agreed. We originally intended to locate the new well on property to port zones adjacent to the reservoir, but based on the topography, would require a major reconfiguration of the property and require construction of an unplanned for ten foot tall concrete retaining wall, which would add at least an additional fifty thousand dollars to the cost of the project. And that doesn't count the required engineering and design for those items. Another major relevant factor in this request is that inflation has increased the cost of drilling the new well by over a hundred thousand dollars, now putting it somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So buying the Allen-Carry system simply makes economic sense. Sanitation requirements which mandate a one hundred foot radius around the well would require us to purchase at least six lots and or obtain easements from several surround- would require us to purchase at least six lots and/or obtain easements from several surrounding landowners, including the county, in addition to drilling the well. At current prices, those six lots would exceed three hundred thousand dollars of our total five hundred thousand dollar budget, which would have fully funded the original project, but won't anymore thanks to inflation. When we obtained the Department of Commerce grant, the property required would have cost about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Cost of drilling was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand plus the cost of installing the necessary booster pump system to provide sufficient water pressure to the lots at elevations within proximity to the storage reservoir. This is an estimated additional seventy-five thousand. While the booster pump system was originally designed into the project, again, thanks to inflation, the cost of necessary equipment plus installation costs have more than doubled. Buying the Allen-Carry system solves all these problems, keeps us within our budget in spite of the negative impacts of inflation. The Allen-Carry system, including the well and its all its in-ground infrastructure, can be quickly integrated into our existing system with simple intertie. Contract modification will allow us to save taxpayer dollars, minimize environmental disturbance, and complete this project much sooner than our mandated deadline. With all these factors present, we respectfully ask that you approve our request for a change in scope for the, of the ARPA contract, just as the Department of Commerce already has. The original scope was for drilling a new well. We truly appreciate the fact that other worthy projects were passed over when you approved this grant specifically for that new well and the port applaud your courage in doing so. We also understand this change might have impacted your approval decision at the time had the request been the original asked. However, this modification to the contract delivers the very same outcome. Does it a year sooner and keeps us within our original budget in spite of the ravages of inflation. Your approval of this change is simply a great example of responsible government at work. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for, for bringing us a copy of the last bit of, of your statement that you just read. I will ask Mackenzie to put that on our website as well. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First off, Larry and Commissioner Scott, appreciate you taking the time to join us this morning and being down here in person. So with the, with the change in scope, is there a difference in available hookups between purchasing the water system and what you would have gotten out of drilling the well?
No, not really. The amount that we would, the new well would service or, and the amount that the Allen-Carry well is capable of is about the same. If there is a difference, it's going to be less than twenty-five.
Twenty, less the twenty, potentially twenty-five less hookups?
We don't, we don't know for certain. I'm just speculating, but based on their flow and the pump data and, you know, what we anticipated from a new well, the difference is negligible. And which one it is, I can't really tell you.
Okay, and then I was just curious.
And it would depend on the depth of the new well and you know, the pump data from the new well.
Gotcha. And so you said that you're still awaiting some DOH and Ecology approval and and can you just, can you talk a little bit more about what the expected timeline there is? And I'll just be, I'll just be candid in what I'm asking that, what my thinking is. I mean, I think, you know, this money's already earmarked for you all. And so it's just a matter of changing the scope of the contract if we want to. And so my comfort level would be a lot higher if, in addition to having Commerce sign off on this, if you had your approval from DOH and Ecology. And the only reason I say that is because you already referenced earlier that, that you've tried to complete this cell twice in the past and it hasn't worked out. So I just want to make sure that, you know, since that, since that money's not going anywhere, it might be, at least in my opinion, easier to amend the contract once you have that a little bit more lined out by the state.
We expect Ecology is going to approve this once we answer the question they submitted on Friday. And they were just some clarifying questions more than anything else. They weren't, they weren't new questions about, well, what about this? It was how does this impact that kind of questions. And our consultant's working on that today. We expect he will have everything answered by the end of the week. So, and I want to talk a little bit about the why it didn't go together the last two times that we tried to do this with the Carries. They did not want to sell the well. They just wanted to sell the infrastructure, you know, the in-ground infrastructure. They wanted to keep the well and try to develop six lots with it. And Department of Health was kind of sketchy about that. They didn't like that idea. And we had a purchase and sale agreement in place at one point and the Carries backed out of it at the last minute. So, and they, they were still trying to pursue their water right at the time. But they have come to the conclusion they're not going to get a water right. And they're just selling the whole thing makes more sense for them personally than it, than it did now than it did then.
And then just kind of, just in general, I mean, wanting to do our due diligence, I mean, the state of the system, no issues like with booster pumps or anything like that and getting approved by DOH. It's, you feel like it meets the regulatory burden to, to be a good asset for the port to acquire?
Yes. Yeah, because it, what it does is it eliminates any potential competitors. It brings everybody in the service area under one billing. So it just makes everything a lot easier, a lot simpler. It, it makes all of the the financial part of it simple. It makes actually supplying water simple. And it just makes a lot of sense. You know, they've already got the sanitation, the hundred foot sanitary radius done. And, you know, so we don't have to deal with that. All we have to do is put the booster pump in and it's good to go.
Great. And just sorry, I appreciate those answers. Just a question for Mark. When's the, when's the deadline for obligation?
December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And, and as I was explaining a little bit to Larry before, it was, the concern was the, the time it takes for individuals to obligate these funds. And so as we approach the end of twenty twenty-four, I think that the concerns the commissioners have expressed to me was if it was not obligated, then we didn't want to lose the opportunity to spend that money and have to return it back to the federal government. And so as we approached the end of twenty twenty-four, the timeline associated with how we can actually spend these funds, it gets harder and harder to do, right? So if all of a sudden in November, you know, we heard that, okay, now this, this money can't be obligated or legally obligated, then, then we'd be in a rush to see how we could get it spent. And that would, that, that was, I believe, the concern of the commissioners that I was trying to express to the Port of Allen.
Right, and the money has to be expended by twenty twenty-six. I mean, the project has to be completed by twenty twenty-six.
Correct, correct. It has to, it, the money actually has to be spent. Yeah, but it has to be, yeah, gone.
And Larry, one last thing. So the, you had mentioned earlier about a change in the, in the water rights between, I guess, the Port of Allen and, and the, and the Carries. And that has, has that been, has that been filed with Ecology and approved? Is that, where's the, what's the status on that?
No, what, what happened here, maybe, maybe I misstated it wrong. We have the water right. The Carries do not have a water right. They drilled the well in anticipation of getting the water right. And back in early two thousands, we were competing against them for who was going to get the water right to be able to serve the Allen UGA. The port paid for expedited permit processing and we had a better mitigation plan. And our plan was accepted and the caring plan was not. And that's why we were granted the water right. Carries have no water right. They've tried to get one and finally came to the conclusion that Ecology is not going to grant them one. And I think that has a lot to do with their motivation about selling us everything, or before they wanted to hold on to the well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner, another one?
Yes, so Judy, you can correct me if I'm wrong on some of this. I was there through that process when, when all that happened. I'd just been elected. The county is actually responsible for helping the Port of Allen actually acquire that water right, because when I came in, I was told about the issue. And when I found out they'd been working on it for twenty years, at the time, they'd been working on it for twenty years, I asked them what was holding up and when I found out what was holding up, I got ahold of the county, worked with the county, and the county actually allocated outflow from our, our sewer to, to be considered as inflow into the water systems, into the ground system that allowed the tribes and everybody else to sign off. And the carry system at the time, they were already basically in existence. They're going for their water rights. But as Larry had said, they couldn't get it completely finished out. What we ended up doing was actually a little different than what Larry said. We actually paid to actually move them behind us. And they accepted to move, to, to put the port in front of the carry system. That's why that happened, because he could not get it finalized in time and it was actually holding up our system when we put it in. So another thing to, to make note of is, I thought was amazing at the time is the way it actually works with those water rights when we got those water rights. It wasn't the well, you have the water rights. It's just like plugging a new hole to put a straw in, in a new area. That's all it comes down to. It's still your water rights in that area. You don't have to go to the same location. And that's why the carry system would work as a, a whole new system for the, for the port. Some of the things that I, I want to say, I have some, some concern with, but not, not bad, just a little concerned. I want to point out that I do believe that in the end, we're going to be doing extensions. I'm looking at this only as an extension at this point. We, you know, a reallocation of how we'd spend it, but maybe an extension on, on them being able to spend that money. I believe we're going to have other organizations coming to us soon talking about extending their requests as well, because they couldn't get them done in time. And we're just spending the amount of time that takes to have that funds basically spent early. We want it obligated by twenty twenty-four, but as Commissioner Trask said, we need it expended by twenty-six. I myself, I would like to see them get this for us to transfer our, our scope, but to also put a hard deadline on it. The reason why I asked for a hard deadline is because there is going to be a time, we're going to come back as a commission and look to spend the funds that are not reallocated or, or spent properly or spent in time. And we're going to reallocate funds again. We're going to need to before the twenty twenty-four deadline of December thirty-first. One of the things to talk to Mark about was, of course, over obligating by utilizing county projects that we're already going to pay for. So this way, we don't have any chance of losing money. It actually gets spent no matter what. We either spend it through our county money or through the ARPA funds by over allocating. And I'm sure Mark will explain that to you more. We've had some deep conversations about it. So what I'd like to see is that we either, whatever our contract is now that we have with them that we set up with a little bit extra time, but they either are able to get those things signed off by Ecology and everybody else, or we put it back into the pot to reallocate. I really want them to get it. I think it's beneficial for, for the community of Allen. I haven't talked to them yet to find out if we ever ex, expand the, the boundaries of the Allen UGA to cover part of Razor Road, if we do put a road through there, whether they'll be able to get water to it or not. But I know they won't be able to if they don't have the ability to draw this water. I know it's not possible. So I'm in support of this and hope we will move forward with it. But if we do that, we put a hard deadline on it that they will acquire the needed sign off by a certain date so that money can go back into a pot if they do not, and we can reallocate it to somebody that is already in a position to take advantage of it and we not lose it.
I think there's some, there's some great thoughts and great questions. Commissioner Scott or Larry, have you heard, have you pursued anything back from Ecology or Health about when they might have everything that they, you know, all their concerns answered? Do you have a, a deadline for that or a date?
I would not want to predict what the Department of Ecology does any more than any of you would. But if we don't have to have the money spent until twenty twenty-six and obligated before the end of next year, I don't see us having a problem meeting those deadlines.
Okay, so in, yeah, and you mentioned November, the end of November, that's of this year, right?
No, he said twenty twenty-four.
No, no, in, in your, in your statement.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we believe that once we get the purchase and sale agreement done, that all we have to have is the approval from Ecology and Health. And we don't see those as being obstacles at this point. They've been very open to us doing this. They, they just want to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. But having shepherded this project through their process, I don't want to predict their timeframes. That's all I'm concerned about.
Part of it is that they are waiting for a purchase and sale agreement, and there's some other questions that need to be answered. And once those get done, then we can get the purchase and sale agreement together. And then we can, I think Ecology will move forward. Does that sound correct, Larry?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I was wondering if that was, if they wanted that agreement before they moved too fast on their end. I do know that government, especially the state, kind of moves slower than, than the local governments, as you guys know. So Mark, next steps forward. So it sounds like we have.
Before we do, can I ask another question of them though first? Because I want to clarify something that you just said. Larry, the December twenty-four obligation, that's our deadline, not yours. We have to have everything in, in place. Currently, when is their contract? When, when are they supposed to be able to do it by right now, Mark? What's their date?
I was just trying to find that. And I actually think, give me, give me a couple of seconds.
Do you have to remember, Larry, what your, your hard line date for doing this was in the original contract?
We have, we have to have this in place up and operating by March first, twenty twenty-five. That's our deadline from Ecology to have a new well online.
But I mean, for us.
We drill a new well or whatever. Our date to have a new well online is March first, twenty twenty-five.
But I meant with the county when we gave you the ARPA funds. Because here's the way I, I'm looking at that, just to be safe so that we're all on the same page. Again, I support this. I want, oh, Jennifer has the answer, or she wouldn't have popped on.
Yeah, go for it.
I believe it was June thirtieth of twenty-four that we put into the contract. That's what we've been putting into all the contracts so that we have time, so that the county has time to reobligate funds for anything that falls through.
So I would, I would continue with saying, thank you for that, Jennifer. That's what I was worried about. I think that's a good timeline for us to make sure that if it doesn't happen, if they don't have everything signed by that date, if we do decide to change the, the change of scope, if they don't have everything signed and, and ready to move forward by that date, then we have to pull the funds at that time. But that would give us six months to put it back out for rebid for everybody again, of which they can rebid again, but hopefully they'll have it all done way before that. And I don't think we have any risk.
I don't see that date as a problem.
What do you think, what I just said, Kevin and Sharon?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, I, I'd like to stick with the dates that we've given everybody else as well. So we're staying consistent.
And the only other question I thought of was, have you already gone through your, have you gone through the process to get that appraised, the system appraised, so that we know that we're, I mean, that you're going to have the other, like, that, that falls in the funding that's available. I mean, to do a third party appraisal and we haven't, and I asked that because I'm, I want to make sure that the, the numbers are right, but I also want, we've never done a purchase through ARPA funding, and so this is kind of uncharted territory for us. We've done projects but not purchasing systems. And so, you know, I, I just want to know that if we do change the scope on this, that, that you're, that it's going to get, get you what you really want out of it and that that you've, you've done that, that part of the process as well.
We have not had a third party appraisal done. And to be honest, I've had a hard time trying to find an appraiser for a water system. I've talked to Evergreen Rural Water. I've talked to commercial appraisers. And nobody seems, nobody local, either in Mason or Kitsap or Thurston County, seems to have any idea how to appraise a water system. I do know that PUD one bought thirty-two water systems, I think, in twenty twenty. And they paid about thirteen hundred And they paid about thirteen hundred dollars a connection. When I told Mr. Carey this, his face went white. Fourteen, do the math, fourteen. Fourteen, thirteen hundred dollars times fourteen connection. Um but he had, he has spent a significant amount of money drilling as well. And uh, you know, just the cost of what he would do plus the cost of the real estate. Uh doing a competitive market analysis of the real estate around it. Uh three hundred thousand dollars for six lots is pretty reasonable. So.
Commerce, commerce isn't requiring an appraisal. They're just, they're they're comfortable letting, letting you just reach a price. It's interesting.
Yes.
Yeah, we we probably need to make sure Jennifer uh checks and make sure that's not a requirement also from ARPA. It's federal, it's completely different than the state, and I I agree with Commissioner Shute. I don't want to make a mistake there. If this required, we need to have it. So we we're going to answer it to somebody someday.
Well, if it's required, we'll we'll figure some way to get it done and get it done within the timeframe.
I remember years ago, we looked at it and it was, we can only find people to give us uh values on water rights. Uh each one having a certain value.
And and that's, that's been the big question. You know, when I talked to Evergreen Rural Water, they were like. Well, it all depends on how much your water right is worth and how do we calculate that? And they're like, well, we don't really know.
Yeah, I think our but our biggest concern is just that that we're meeting because because this is not, you know, county money or even state money. This is federal money. And so the the requirements, as you can imagine, are are a lot uh more strict. And very, very, very clear. So we want to make sure, well, at the beginning it wasn't clear. It's more clear now. How about that? And so we just want to make sure that 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 we're complying with with our obligations to make sure that we're doing everything uh perfect.
And we understand that.
Good, good.
I think we need to make sure that's included in any contract if we do a change. Uh what Commissioner Shute had said there, I hadn't thought about that, but that's definitely. We got to make, we have to make sure that that is at least looked at. And if it is, it's put into the contract. When it comes to a purchase, it's a different animal. But how now, if we all agree to do this, how would we move forward from this point? Because I'm sure that the port would need to have that established first before they start going out looking to spend that money to see that they can spend that money.
Well, I mean, I I think, I mean, they already have the lion's share of the money converted from commerce. Um you know, they already have this earmarked from us. It's just a matter of of actually getting some of these details. So I mean, I I don't. I don't know that we need to make a decision today. I think there's some, there's some outstanding questions that need to be answered. And I think we have, I think we have a lot of runway to be able to come back and make a decision. In particular, since the state hasn't hasn't finally signed off on everything yet. So um I do think we have a little bit of time and I'd like to see answers to those questions first.
Would it? Isn't that a a pretty big burden to have them do that first when we, in order for them to do it? Because they're a governmental entity, we have to somehow say that the contract is changing, or we go through a process to change that contract before they can go looking to expend it. Uh with the caveat on there that, you know, i- if it's not, if these things aren't in line by a certain date, then the money reverts back to us.
I mean, I see, I mean, it's six of one half and a dozen of the other, in my opinion. I mean, the the money. The money would already revert back to us without a change in scope. Um and so it's, I mean, it's just, it's just a timing issue. And I think without having some clarity on the issues that we raised today. Um I mean, you know, I mean, we've been clear with with Commissioner Scott and Larry about some of the questions that we had. And I think if, you know, they can, they seem motivated enough to be able to go and provide some feedback to those things. I mean, it could be. It could be fairly quick. I mean, I think just being able to to have a little bit more assurance from them on the issues that we raised, I think is a good thing.
I guess my question would be a little different. Are we telling them then, as a commission with three people here right now? That if they're able to achieve these things, that we're willing to change the scope. I don't even know that has to be official, but it just makes sense to me that we would get that out of the way at some point here. That we're willing to change the scope if they are able to acquire those things.
Yeah, I've always given deference to our subcontractors with with ARPA in terms of knowing their projects and and, you know, if there's things that come up. I mean, I want to be able to be deferential to them. I mean, this is a, this is pass through money from the federal government, and so we don't want to lose it. But at the same time, I want to give, I want to give some deference to to the local recipients on it. Um you know, but I think like we've done in the past, I mean, we've, everybody that's coming in front of us, if we've had additional questions for them. We've, we've paused and and tried to get some clarity on that and and then made a decision. So um I don't think they're executing the sale tomorrow. Um and so I think we do have a little bit of time to get a little bit more information from them on on the issues that we raised today. But I'm not opposed to changing the scope of the contract if if we can, if we can show some of the, um you know, some some responses to the questions.
I feel like the scope of the contract is going to change regardless of 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 what. Um either you're drilling a well or you're buying the property. So I think that that the scope has already changed. Because I don't think that you you said, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I think it would be. A lot more to to drill the well. And so at this point in time, you're really just looking at purchasing the the well that's already in the ground and that's already working. Um and 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 providing water to to those that need it, right? And so.
Well, the expansion that we need to serve the rest of the existing UGA.
Right, right. And so in in my mind, um changing the scope. Right now is probably a good thing, just because then we're, because then we're we're committed. And you know that we're committed and we know that you're committed. And so um with all the commitments. Um I it it should, it's a great project and I I'm I'm excited. To see some resolution, honestly, in the Allen area and people working together. I think that that's a great step forward. So if we need to change the scope, um and and I'm sure that. Um I would, I honestly, I would feel better if we if we went ahead and changed the scope right now. Because um we're tying up some ends that are loose and then we have resolve. That make sense?
Uh I would also, if as long as we have that hard deadline on it, that those other things that that we're worried about not getting done or done by this timeline. Or it comes back at the end of June. Uh but I don't want to step over Commissioner Shute. Are you okay with that, Commissioner, or do you want more?
I am, no, I mean, I've been clear about what my my feelings are on it. And I think, you know, if if there's a majority of the commission that supports changing the script of the contract, then that's, I mean, majority rules. So I'm fine with that. But I still think that that does, I I still think that we need to have some of these issues resolved or addressed by the Port of Allen that we raised today. And I think, I think their constituents would want to know that. I think they would want to know that if they're, if they're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for a water system. That everything is in line and that it's proved and that it has, that they're paying the right amount of money for it and that that process has been followed. And so um, you know, I I respect the will of the commission, um but still want us to see those questions get answered. Or 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 have some clarity on them before we commit to a another hundred thousand dollar or commit to changing the hundred thousand dollars.
So uh we we commit to changing the scope, what like see with the hard line on it. That if those things are not adjusted by the June deadline or not fulfilled by the June deadline, then the money comes back into the pot.
As as it would under the current.
Yes.
Right, just with the the difference, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we guarantee that it gets done because it either gets done, tho- those things you're worried about either gets done or we don't give them the money.
Let me be clear about what needs to be done. We need to have an appraisal of the system.
Don't know that.
Pardon?
Only if it's required.
Yeah.
If it's required and if it is, get it done. What else do you want us to do? I want to be sure that I know so we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
You need the sign offs from ecology and everybody else that you're waiting for now to be able to acquire.
Yeah, that goes without saying.
But yeah, if they're not signed off in June. Then that's what I'm saying is that's the hard part. If they're not signed off, if you can't get that established in June. Then I'm supportive of it going back into the pot for reallocation and you can reapply, but. Uh oh, there come.
Um just change the subject real quick. We have a message on the screen here. Idle TV standby that we have to.
Not anymore.
Okay, there we go. That's it. Yeah. I didn't want us to all go blank here.
Mackenzie's on the top of that. She's good.
But anyway, I just want to be clear with what you're requiring from us. That is sign off on a cow from ecology and health. Uh find out if an appraisal is required for the ARPA funds and if so, to get it done. All right, is there anything else?
I'd love to hear what Jennifer has to say also.
Yeah.
And have it all done by the end of June. I'm hoping to have this whole thing done by the end of June and the well online, so.
Me too. Jennifer?
I was just going to say, Commissioners, thank you for letting me interrupt. That um that we can definitely look into if a if an appraisal is required by um the Treasury. And um also we can, we can draft this uh revision and have it out to you for for review. And we can put in there that um the Department of Ecology and Department of Health um. Approval is, you know, required um ahead of time. We can definitely put that into the contract.
I would like that.
And keep the June thirtieth of twenty twenty four deadline.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, well, that works for us. If somebody could send me an email just outlining what we've discussed, we'll get it done.
Thank you, Port Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, thanks for making the drive.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Bye bye.
All right, well, let's move on down to where we're, we're slightly behind on our schedule. Um so let's on, let's move on down to the auditor, Steve.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner Trask. Good morning, Commissioner Netherland and Commissioner Shute. Happy Monday, everybody. Thank you for giving me a little time on the briefing agenda today. I wanted to review with you our our plans to apply for the second tranche of funds from the Secretary of State's office for the uh. Information security grant. And for fiscal year twenty twenty four, we're looking at a list of items that uh add up to just under forty thousand dollars or so. And that would be about half of what what's potentially available through the eighty thousand dollar a year grant. Um. Two, I guess the one thing just to remind everybody is when we accept this grant money, the one condition that the Secretary of State's office imposes upon us. Is that we continue to have uh the Albert sensor uh installed on the county network. And operational to uh provide monitoring for a third party nonprofit entity of our county network traffic. Just don't want you guys to lose sight of that. Um we're looking at a list of items to make additional improvements and enhancements in the security of our election system. Two of those items require your uh approval or conditional approval. The first, we're asking uh for the Secretary of State's office to uh help us with funding. To acquire a surplus uh sheriff's interceptor in October that we can use as an elections vehicle. For um making rounds the drop boxes around the county uh during election season. And also um for supporting voter outreach activities and and other uh events and training and whatnot. The other thing, yes.
Just real quick, why does it have to be a sheriff's interceptor?
Because it's available in October and it's it's the, it will get the job done for us. It's the, it's the nearest term option that we have. Kelly and and I and the team have been talking about this for quite some time. We just think that's the best option. The others are put us farther out there uh from a scheduling or timing perspective. And we want to be ready, starting with the uh November general election.
Kelly, you've got, you raised your hand.
I I did. The only thing I have to say is I don't know when that's going to come. So as we get cars in, that's when we'll get an interceptor. I have no clue when that will be. We've got to get the car in, it's got to go to SPS. It guts to get up in before we can downfall one. So when we have, when that's available, there is potential that we can get him a car.
Now, Kelly, are these the ones that we're going through enterprise and uh the enterprise would normally put back on the market and help us to to move?
Correct. These are a car that would have been, went right back into enterprise. Enterprise would sell them on their lot.
Yeah.
We would get the money for that towards the next car.
So uh Steve, I hope you don't mind me jumping in, Commissioner, but since we, since we're active to the car, I got the question. Uh do we have to do that? Don't we have uh pool vehicles?
We have.
We.
Go ahead. We have two uh motor pool vehicles um that uh you sign out, check out and uh. Go from there. Uh I think Steve's would like to have one more full time than a uh a checkout.
More full time and also more uh equipped for with uh. We want to keep the camera on board so that we can uh record sur- surveillance video of of people when they're working up. Uh servicing the drop boxes. We also want to have the thing equipped for uh easy storage and retrieval of our our containers for ballots. Uh when we're out there rounding them up during the election time and other things um.
So I believe that when we, when we down fit, we lose all of the cameras and everything else. So it just goes back to a basic vehicle. There's no added security or anything like that. Are you correct?
That that's correct. The only thing we would do to that vehicle, they would loo- lose the camera. If they wanted a camera, they'd have to get their own type of camera. Would not be the, the cop camera. The only thing we would do is leave that partition wall between the uh driver and passenger seat to the back. Where that's where they'd keep their ballots. That's that's the, I would take, I would strip it just like I've stripped every other vehicle.
But that locked, that locked and secured partition is important for ballot security.
If we did do this, though, uh uh would this grant pay for the acquisition of this vehicle? Would this grant pay for the maintenance and and operation? Because if we started taking cars uh out of uh the rental uh pool and start taking and holding our own. With that will come extra costs and stuff that we're not doing now. Uh.
Well, that's what we're going to be asking for is is the cost to uh acquire it. And and um then also to maintain it, service it.
Right.
So would it be cheaper to? This is a question, I guess, for Kelly and and for Jen. Would it be cheaper to add a car, a a vehicle to our um?
Rental?
With the enterprise already? No.
Um I just wanted to make sure that it um that would be way more expensive. Um so if we keep this vehicle, um you know, of course, we won't get the proceeds from that vehicle, which would then be applied to. Um the vehicle that it replaces. Um so I believe they're they're running about, what are we getting for those, Kelly? Like five thousand dollars roughly, depending on the shape of the vehicle. Um but then the cost comes down, down the road. Um when we go to lease a vehicle to replace this vehicle, it's much more expensive. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind, Commissioners, that um adding one more vehicle to the fleet is um. You know, that can get get very costly. Where right now, keeping this vehicle on, the cost is not that much.
So if we did it, uh we'd expect that the grant would pay for that difference that we would lose from the uh, from the rental. And that it would pay from, what do you think, a two year process uh for funding for two years or?
We're not asking for the uh, for them to make up the difference of what we would uh not get if we were to return it under the lease program. We're asking them, the uh Kelly, help me come up with a uh nominal cost to to acquire the vehicle, add it to the motor pool. We added uh costs in there for the Secretary of State to consider covering in terms of the the um. Routine maintenance, oil changes, we threw in a set of tires and obviously the gas to uh make the rounds.
But you did not have anything in there for the purchasing of the vehicle from us? From the the motor pool?
I don't remember what that exact number is. Um Kelly and I talked about it. Kelly, what was our number on that?
I I I don't remember either. I don't think we did the cost of it. We did the definitely. It was going to cost an oil change or two, it was going to cost a set of tires, any maintenance that had to be done, insurance. And I think we put some, I think we put like five thousand dollars on there, but I can't, I do not remember.
Yeah. Well, no, that that clarifies it, actually. That's what I was looking for. We're never going to get perfection. I just, as long as the work. Well, no, that that clarifies it, actually. That's what I was looking for. We're never going to get perfection. I just, as long as we're close, I'm satisfied. I have one other question on that, though. Kelly, uh, if we were to get a generator, where would we put that?
We would have to store that uh probably in the uh probably probably in the church garage where we store all of our other uh gas equipment.
So it wouldn't be something we put on here to have it uh onsite because the power goes off and the and the roads are full of snow. We're going to go and try and get it, hook up to it and bring it down.
It's going to be a, it definitely will be a call me and I will go get it or the boys will go get it and start it and have it. I mean, we would have it ready to go for election time with the extension cord and everything ready, ready to go for it. Uh, we run our generators right now once a month. Whether we need them or not, we at least put a test on them, so we'll know it will be up and running. Uh, full of gas and ready to go.
So during the process, take up one parking spot. It's all we're talking and you you're good to go. Okay, I got, I was saying you're going to put it on the side of the building uh as the permanent or maybe on the top as a permanent. That's why I was asking. But if it's a temporary, then there's a no, maybe just lose one parking stall.
If that, correct. I can put it down underneath Mark's window or something.
Hey, the other thing, Commissioners, where I I'm looking for your uh uh conditional buy-in. I know that uh in Administrator Neary still, we're pulling together the uh plan for the the old fire station up there in Belfair, but we've we've uh put a placeholder in that plan with with Mark to have some space reserved for temporary vote center operations during an election. And so uh whatever facilities costs are associated with that, I don't think it's a lot. We're asking for the Secretary of State to cover that and with that relocation of the the ballot drop box from the from the Belfair Timberland Library to that uh fire station location. So that's part of this request also. Um, the other things that are in the mix, Randy, you touched on the the generator already for continuity of operations, contingency planning. We also wanted to make some additional updates to the tabulation room. We want to bring the uh elections network servers into the tabulation room and we'll have then everything contained within four walls for that for the election system, the elections network. And with that, be able to make the uh cabling for the network completely visible uh to election observers. So that we can uh, I think, really quickly end the debate about what's connected to the network and what isn't. Um, the other aspect of of the grant request, we're looking for some uh equipment upgrades. We want to replace the smart TV in the ballot processing room with a dumb monitor. And we want to add three uh monitors for the um signature verification stations. Once we bring the the uh the ballot sorter, the ballot envelope sorting and scanning machine online here later this year, that will facilitate viewing of signature verification operations by election observers. And we're also asking for the uh the Secretary of State to uh fund the um purchase of a wireless detection device. It's one of the tests that they have recommended that we do to keep a keep tabs on on wireless transmitters in and around the ballot processing room and make sure that we can identify and verify that all the signals in that area from a wireless standpoint are uh the ones we would expect to see and not not ones that we wouldn't expect to see. Um. What else we got here? Talked about the monitors, talked about the Dropbox relocation. We also want to relocate the the Dropbox that's currently installed at the YMCA and move it somewhere up closer to uh Fred Meyer Walmart area. And the idea is really all about better access for voters, but also easier uh implementation for um Dropbox video surveillance cameras. And then lastly, if I'm looking at the list right here, is we want to include some funding for se- security or security guard personnel uh to be with us on Election Day in November twenty twenty four for an additional layer of security. Any other comments or questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Auditor. Just a quick question on the um moving of the ballot boxes. Um. So where where you're moving these, are you intending to utilize their surveillance cameras or or you you'll be purchasing and installing and I'm guessing you've had conversations with these businesses about installing devices on their buildings?
This would be um, this would be additional cameras in service under our current agreement with Hood Canal Communications. And so we're, we've been working with Hood Canal Communications to identify um the best alternatives for for relocation and and supportive of video. One of one of their suggestions is that we go talk to people at the credit union up on top of the hill there behind Denny's and see if they'd be willing. There there's a couple other uh sites that they have recommended, but to answer your question, um we'd be looking to purchase and that would be part of this funding also. Purchase two additional video cameras and add those to the surveillance uh subscription that we have for for streaming with Hood Canal Communications.
So I, yeah, so I guess what I'm most interested in, I think it's easier, easy to acquire cameras. I'm just interested in in those follow-up conversations with businesses that you might want to locate these out of upfront of that they're that they're comfortable with us in attaching cameras to their facilities to to monitor the the ballot box.
Same conversation I've had with all the other property owners for the cameras that we've deployed so far. Before we do anything, um, I'm getting their concurrence and approval for the camera. Um, and then we turn Hood Canal Communications loose actually. Do the installation, start streaming the service. But yep, we we're not going to just build rogue on camera installation.
Yeah, do we have in the in the places where you have installed these, have they asked us to for you, I guess, uh, to compensate them for use of their facility like that?
No, they were all happy to uh to allow us to to install cameras and provide that extra layer of security. No one's asked for any compensation or or of any kind.
Good civic-minded.
Model citizens. So just again, looking for you guys to uh give approval for us to add a uh one vehicle to the motor pool there in in the form and fashion of a surplus uh vehicle from the Sheriff's Department and then the conditional provisional approval based on or pending the final approval of the facilities plan that Administrator Neary has and worked just as a placeholder for a temporary vote center up there in Belfair.
And for me, the only thing that I I I'd like to look further at is the vehicle. Um. Because we all, we all want to make sure that our our um, Steve, you just disappeared. We all want to make sure that our elections are are secure and that we have confidence in everything that's going on. So, um. I like the direction of everything else. Um, as long as others are comfortable with that, too, it's uh like IT and and everybody, make sure that they're um kept in the conversation also.
Yep, we keep keep um TJ well in the loop. And I again, I'm I really have been lining up behind Kelly's recommendations on the the best path to uh ob- obtain a a surplus vehicle or any vehicle, so uh I'm open to any other ideas. I think it's a, it's an important one for the Elections Department and just uh hope we can converge on a good plan.
All right. I think twenty twenty four election is going to be a big one, so.
It's going to be awesome. Can't wait.
Commissioners, any other questions or or comments?
So uh the I'm with you. Everything else I completely agree with, and I actually agree with the car, but here's my I'd like to see that you, number one, either are getting the funding that that we do limp, we do roll down exactly what these costs are, what they look like, so we can put it on a piece of paper. Uh, if we're going to do something like that with the car, where that funds will come from, it either come from that grant or it come out of your budget. So we'd like to show it one way or the other uh before I would be just good with it. Other than that, the rest is all grant funded anyway. I'm supportive. So I just want to make sure that we have the right numbers going in for the grant. Uh, or we decide that it comes out of the budget, one of the two on the card.
You talked about the vehicle, right, Randy?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, well, uh, Kelly, I'll I'll get back on your calendar there. We'll just revisit the numbers and and make sure we agree on what's in the estimate and what's not and uh go from there.
Perfect, okay.
All right.
And with that, thank you all.
All right, Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Public Works, do we have Loretta online? Um, I don't see Loretta. I don't see anyone from Public Works.
All right, so um, so yeah, the the Public Works had submitted a list of work basically to keep the commissioners informed of where they're at. And I think one of the issues that they had recently was the uh Harstein Island Bridge Project. And so I know that there's some public out there that has a lot of questions that utilize that bridge as to what are we, how are we moving forward with it? Says I think I've heard it referred to as peanut butter. It looks kind of like peanut butter and it's and it's kind of bumpy. Um, so on Wednesday, they are going to do some microplanning, um, which is I I think it's a, it's a small amount of grinding. Um, I'm not, I don't think that Public Works is one hundred percent sure that that will um completely smooth the road out, but it'll definitely help with that. So um, they they did look at other options and are continuing to ask questions uh about what would it look like if we put maybe a chip seal over the top of it to make it a little bit smoother? Uh, but you would need an engineer to sign off on that to say that it could handle the load, so. Um. So they are, they are continuing to to do a little bit of work on that bridge. It's not done yet, but uh kind of await and see how this microplanning goes and and we'll go from there.
Are you saying add nuts to the peanut butter? That's going to be a chunky peanut butter.
Actually, I think that it probably has nuts in it now and they want to, they want it actually.
They want creamy.
Yeah, they wanted creamy, yes. Um, and and the other item listed under pu- Public Works is actually a a Parks Department, I believe. Um, request from Support Services, so. Let's see, do I have John Taylor on here? John, do you want to talk a little bit about the request to utilize MCR bleachers? Or Diane?
I can speak to it. I have the agreement. Um, Commissioners, every year, the Skookum Rot- Rotary, they use the bleachers from MCR for seeding up at the Oyster Fest. So I have an agreement that I got from Nicole from Risk Management. So I'm asking permission for Mark Kineer as administrator to sign this agreement with the Skookum Rotary. They would come um, take the bleachers from MCR over to Oyster Fest and they'll, they will return them.
Good with me.
I'm supportive.
Okay, thank you. Great.
I believe I'm next.
Yeah, go for it, Jen.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, Commissioners. Okay, so we have the July financials. Um, can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So um going over the general fund revenue, we're at uh sixty-two percent of our um budgeted revenue received in twenty twenty-three through July. We've received twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-six thousand compared to last year, twenty-six million, five hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, we were at sixty-five percent of our budgeted revenue last year. Um. Moving on to the Treasurers' revenue detail, um, are are there any questions before I go on first?
No, again, we have the differences on what's coming in again that anything that you see that we need to worry about?
Um, no, I emailed to you, I believe it was early last month, um through June, um, the responses from the different departments on on why their revenue was uh lower, if it was, we had the um the auditor, um. We had the sheriff um indig- in indigent defense and then um I did not get an emailed response from the clerk, but their revenue is actually up this month um compared to last year, so um. So, so yeah, the auditor, I think theirs was um grant revenue, if I remember right. And then um the the sheriff's big one was um the City of Shelton, their their jail um revenue is down since City of Shelton is um is moving people to the squally um per the jail and then in the indigent defense, I believe, was um was a grant. And then the clerk's office, um they just needed to do their grant billing, I believe, is the major points in there.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, on the Treasurers' revenue detail for uh current expense, we have received eighteen million, three hundred thousand this year compared to um nineteen million, fifty-seven thousand last year. Roughly, so we're at sixty-four percent of our budgeted revenue this year compared to um seventy-one percent last year. And um the major difference there is the property tax. Um, we didn't do the levy shift um last year. And then we um we didn't do um or we did half of the um diversion, so we only did a million eighty and not um two point one six as we've done in past years. Um. Oh, which I guess we hadn't done that last year anyway, so that that's the same. But the levy shift was the the major difference there. Um, and then the um city county assistance is the other major difference. We budgeted two, two and a half million since we had received um close to two and a half million last year. But um we've al- only received uh eight hundred and twenty thousand this year, so um, those are the couple of major differences there. On the expenditures, um, we've expended twenty-five million, one hundred fifty-seven or one hundred fifty-eight thousand roughly in um current expense or the general fund compared to last year, we had expended twenty-two million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand. So um we're right at fifty-two percent of our budgeted expenditures for um through July of twenty twenty-three. Um. About this time of year is when I start analyzing the departments really closely to see um who's going over and might need a budget amendment before year end and um everybody's looking pretty good. I mean, we've got the assessor is slightly over the benchmark of fifty-eight point three percent through July. Um, but I believe a lot of that has to do with the um the payment that's paid out in January for their um for their computer system, so that I believe it's the terror scan maintenance that um that bumps that percentage up. Um, the clerk's office, they um are at fifty-nine percent, which is a little bit alarming considering that they've had uh the staff um shortages um that they've had. So there should be more of a savings there, I would think. Um, they do have a um, an amendment that will be coming in December that was approved earlier in the year for clerk scanners. Um, each one of them received a scanner at their desk, and I believe that was around twelve thousand dollars um. So, anyway, that shouldn't make that drastic of a change, though, I wouldn't think for for them to be so.
Two, two quick things on on that. Um, one of those might be the copier issue that we resolved a few weeks ago. Um, skewing that number a little bit. And then the other issue that that we have to figure out how to address with the clerk is um the Thurston Mason BH ASO is um trying to uh reimburse the clerk's office for ITA court services. And so there's also probably some money that that hasn't been invoiced on the on the revenue side, um, but you're seeing they're hopefully clerking those ITA uh they're hopefully clerking those ITA, uh, court hearings, um, for folks that are in involuntary treatment, and so, um, I believe they haven't billed for anything yet this year, and so I, I haven't been able to get Charles to get back in touch with me, and so we need to come up with a strategy because the BH ASO wants to give us this money, uh, but we have to request it. Um, and so from my understanding, Public Defense, Prosecutor, uh, Superior Court, they're all continuing with their invoices, but um, I think we need to get, um, I don't know if it's a training issue or, or just whatever communication needs to happen, so. As the board member for the BH ASO, I'm happy to work with whoever to get that going, but to this point, the Clerk's Office has been non-responsive to, to both me and the BH ASO.
Okay, so, um, maybe Mark and I can work together, um, getting them to respond.
Yeah, it's, um, there's also a request, um, from them, Kevin, the BHO to, um, come up with a
Single rate.
Single rate, and so that is some work that needs to be done.
Yeah, and, and I, I, that's a, I think that'll be a, a good streamlining thing for us, Thurston County just completed theirs, and that, it took, it took a long time for them to, to get to the point where they were able to, to nail down the single rate, um, what they were going to go forward with, and so it's not like a quick and easy thing, so yeah, if we can get whatever we need to do to get on top of that, I think it'll make it easier for our offices as well.
I actually asked, uh, I actually asked Mark Friedman for a copy of the work that Thurston County did to come up with that single rate, so, um, if you could help get that, I could, we could use that as a, um, as a model, the, to plug some of our numbers into and, and see if we can't, uh, come up with a great specific to Mason County.
Perfect, I'll, I'll make a note and ask them at our meeting this afternoon.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and then the only other department that I see at this time that might need a little bit of, um, help in their budget, um, or that it appears that they might is left, um, which we have no control over, um, over that, they're at sixty percent, so that's something I'll definitely keep an eye on to see if they need, um, an amendment later on this year. So, um, moving on to the special fund, um, and some, some of it's in the general fund, the special revenue streams comparison, so, um, we have community development revenues are up, um, over the last, uh, well, over last year, not the last five years, because twenty-one was a pretty good year. And then the property taxes, we already talked about that, um, sales taxes up. Um, filings are down, and lodging taxes just, um, slightly up over, over last year and the previous, um, four years. And then REIT is, um, is down, but not, um, as alarmingly as it has been over the last few months, so that's a good time.
I just did the, the math on it, so we went from close to forty, then we dropped into the thirties, uh, difference from the year before. This one here has us at twenty-six percent, so we've made up some ground, uh. Hopefully, I would expect we're going to make up maybe another ten, fifteen percent for the end of the year, so we're probably looking at a twenty, fifteen, twenty percent, yeah, that's not bad. Compared to others, I'll bet you'll find other counties are devastated.
Okay, so moving on to the, the sales tax, the details, so in, um, July, we received eight hundred and nine thousand dollars in sales tax, which is, um, above what we received last year, about nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars, um. So if we receive exactly what we did from August through December of last year, we'll be at, um, about nine point five eight million at the end of the year in um, collections of sales tax, and we budgeted, um, eight point four million, so, um, we're well above our projection is well above our, our budget in sales tax, so it's always nice to report good news there.
Have we seen anything that would tell us what that was, uh, in, uh, May? Which was probably actually April or February or, or March, I mean? What caused that?
Uh, no, I haven't seen anything that would, um, indicate any, any cause of that.
I wonder if it was concerned because that was when the economy looked a little intimidating.
Yeah, that could be, everybody just dried up their yeah, everybody just dried up their spending, and then they released again. I'm happy with that.
Helping make up, helping make up for some of the shortage services that we've experienced in the, um, the city-county assistance money that we've not received, so it's positive.
Yeah, maybe everybody went to Olympia that month, I don't know.
Or like Commissioner Travis saying, they just stayed home, they just got nervous and they waited, they held off and then got tired of waiting and started spending again.
Yeah, felt more comfortable, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, moving on to the six-year recap, so, um, in cash, we've have, we have twenty-eight million, two hundred and ninety, ninety-six thousand in all of our reserves, you can see that, um, here we have about ten million, five hundred in unreserved cash, um, at the end of July. Um, again, we're at sixty-two percent of our budgeted revenues received, and, um, and that's pretty well in line with the previous five years, um. A little bit down o- over twenty-two and twenty-one, um, so nothing to be concerned about, though, and then our, our spending is, um, right in line with our budget, so fifty-two percent, so looking good there overall in the general fund, and, and, uh, the special special fund cash balances, we're at sixty million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, and, um, that of course includes the ARPA funds, about six point six five, six million, um, but we did have four and a half million last year in ARPA funds, um, so anyway, we've, we've got quite a bit more this year in our special funds than we have in the previous five years, so, um, looking good there.
What happened with, uh, the reserve for North Bay Case Inlet, we did what?
Yeah, we, we rolled that into North Bay so that, um, it didn't need to be its own sep- separate fund, um. And same thing with, um, all of these that are zeros in here now, um, we've consolidated those, um, or moved them out, like the, you know, Sheriff's Special Funds, um, got rolled out into the Sheriff's Boating and Narcotics, and then, um, part of that went to their current expense under the Sheriff, um. So yeah. On motor pool, we have, um, expended out seven hundred and ninety thousand through July, our budget is one point seven one one million, um, so we're about forty-six percent of our overall budget. Um, we have not expended, um, you know, the, the capital outfits, we haven't received a lot of our vehicles, so we haven't had the, the capital outfits to expend like we had last year, um. We had a lot more going out at this time, at this point in time last year. And moving on to the special fund revenue, we're, we've received thirty-four million, thirty-nine thousand compared to last year, thirty-three million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, we're at fifty-six percent of our budgeted revenue compared to forty-one percent, um, last year, um. And our special fund expenditures, we have expended twenty-seven million, seven hundred sixty three thousand compared to last year, twenty-six million, four hundred and seventy thousand. We're at thirty-six percent of our budgeted expenditures compared to last year, at thirty percent. So any questions or comments? On any of this?
I just, quite often, we have it, uh, looks too good to be true, the one year it has to be evened out the next year, so, but we're still way ahead of where we should worry or think anything's wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your reports.
I actually look forward to it, Jennifer.
Good. I'm, I'm glad that you guys enjoy this part of the briefing. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jen, so Mary, are you ready to talk about your MOU?
Yes, I am, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so we have an MOU, um, with Woodworkers Local Lodge, W thirty-eight, I A M, sorry, my camera's not working, I'm just messing with it. Um, in Appendix A, for the current collective bargaining agreement that expires at the end of this year, there's an error for the Deputy Public Defender, um, one step, um, and so there are two employees that would need an update, um, and then we need to change the salary table and unit schedule to be correct. So it'd be just salary savings and then just looking for approval of the MOU, I believe Tim walked over a signed copy to McKinsey on Thursday or Wednesday, I can't remember, and pushing it to September twelfth to give the union time to sign it as well, they sign first, too.
Sounds good to me.
Me as well.
Yep.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, so our next item on the list is our North Mason facility, so just to update the Commission on work that's been done since last week, I talked with, uh, our assessor, auditor, treasurer, as well as some of our departments to get specific examples of how they would like to utilize, uh, the North Mason facility, I, I think a common theme with all of these folks is, yes, we'd love to, but never have felt like we've had a specific place, um, I, I asked a little bit about that because I felt like there was some room up in the, in the current area that we lease, um, but, uh, but needless to say, they, they definitely still have an interest, um, some really interesting topics came up in talking with our separately electeds uh, in terms of, it would sure be nice to have uh, the auditor, assessor, and treasurer, they often work so close, so an individual comes into the office and they have a question, they often have to, to go over to a neighboring office, uh, to get their answer for specific parts of it, and so having a, they, they would enjoy seeing some services offered in North Mason area, uh, but just wanted to express the importance of having an individual, um, that was capable of answering questions for the auditor and the assessor's office also. Uh, specifically, the treasurer said that it would be, it would be really nice to, to have those available up there, she said after COVID many individuals moved to electronic payment of their taxes, so it did put a little bit of a damper on the number of individuals that were coming in, um, to pay over the counter. Uh, but to, that, that appears to have kind of leveled off and, and she can expect uh, that she doesn't see that changing, she doesn't see individuals going back to, to actually coming to pay in person, um. The assessor's office, uh, would like to actually try at least one day a week, they, they currently hold quite a few classes up in the Balfour area to help uh, seniors in the area fill out applications for exemptions, um, they would like to, to see how it goes in, in terms of offering services up there, uh, that to determine how often that they would want to do it, but they would, they would like to start out with at least one day a week. Uh, the auditor, as you heard, uh, would like to provide services, uh, of, of Voting Service Center up there surrounding elections. Um, when I asked about what does that look like, you know, we have an eighteen-day voting period, so in front of each election, would you want to have somebody, um, up at that site, uh, for the entire eighteen days, and and I think that that's still up in the air a little bit in terms of, uh, when, I think it becomes more important as you approach Election Day because, uh, individuals wanting to get registered and receive a ballot or receive a replacement ballot, um, physically come into the office to do that often, and, and having somebody up there in that area, uh, would definitely provide them with a more efficient way of, of receiving a ballot or, or getting a changed, uh, replacement ballot. Uh, Public Health and Community Services, uh, definitely would use it, uh, consistently as a pick-up and drop-off location on the environmental health side. So individuals, um, dropping off subject permits or se- subject plans, excuse me, uh, or coming in to pick up or drop off water samples, um, would love to, to have something up there uh, that they could, that they could utilize to, to prevent individuals from having to drive down, because those are oftentimes, um, in-person type services that are provided. Planning and permitting, um, really didn't have anything off the top of their head in terms of, hey, we have to do this. I do know talking with staff within planning and permitting that they had some interest in, in having a place, uh, that they could meet with individuals up in the area, or or maybe a home base, kind of like I, what I have called hoteling stations, um, giving them an area where they could actually um, just relocate to the North Mason facility for the day. Uh, so as far as, as staffing and, and what would like, what individuals would like to see up there, um, I definitely see an interest in that, uh, but a specific plan for, um, outside of the assessor's office, a sp- specific plan for uh, how we would occupy that facility or, or how often it would occupied, be occupied, I think is dependent upon um, the demand that they would see, but definitely are interested in, in looking into it. Happy to answer any questions with the staffing plan first?
Commissioners.
Just, uh, oh, go ahead. I was just, I was just gonna say a big thanks to Mark for, for running this down last week and getting some clarity on what, what offices might be interested or able to offer in Balfour, so I, I think this is a fantastic start that we can that we can grow with.
Well, and I think it's a good start, but I also want to remember that, and you already know this, but sometimes the Commission decides also, uh, what things are, are done up there in the North Mason area where they don't have to travel from Duwato and do an hour to come here, that we may be able to provide more services as twenty-two thousand cars go, uh, by, uh, through Balfour at a day, uh. And if we don't have it, they can't use it. So I appreciate you going out and seeing, but I would remind you, that's, that's the start, not the end. We could be deciding to do a lot more things up there in the North Mason area in the very near future.
So I'm, I'm, you know, we're finding that a lot of our services that we provide to folks, um, especially larger, so planning and permitting was one that I dug into a little bit. Um, the, you know, oftentimes when we have commercial development, those are, are individuals that are very professional about how they approach their projects. Um, they're accustomed to doing things online, and so they often, um, either have meetings, uh, or have meetings in conjunction with submitting their materials electronically. Um, so that stuff is, is for, for large commercial-type developments or planned developments, uh, those tend to be a little bit more sophisticated, uh, as we get down into the, um, individual citizens wanting to make upgrades or, or build a home in an area, um, those definitely, uh, do require in-person. And I think that there would be an opportunity, uh, for individuals because we schedule all of those now, um, to be able to schedule meetings that could occur up in the north end if it would make it easier for folks, or, or depending on how many projects are, are live at the time, um, maybe setting, setting a day aside um, for individuals up in that area to come in and meet with a, a planning and permitting specialist. So just to get down into the details, there are, are three plans that you have in your materials right now, I call them the green, the orange, and the blue. So I'm going to share my screen here real quick so we can kind of talk about them together. So hopefully you're seeing the green now?
Yep.
Okay, so the green plan was to, um, modify a couple of the bays to accommodate the Sheriff's Office, um, this would provide the Sheriff's Office with um, direct access and secured access to the area that is kind of, if you can see, uh, let's see if I can highlight it, is this area here, um, and actually not all of that area, apologize.
All of it?
Not all of it. Oh, no, that's what I'm actually trying to prevent, um, so mostly, mostly this area here. Uh, the reason to the, you know, we've sat down and talked with Sheriff's Office, we've walked through the building a number of times, I believe each commissioner had an opportunity to walk through the Sheriff's Office. One of the reasons they liked this area is because oftentimes, um, you know, coming in, it's a, it's a cement floor now, and so they felt like it was, it would be easier to clean. Oftentimes, they, um, are not the cleanest when they're coming in from patrol, uh, and the individuals that they bring in to uh, go through the BAC room, which is this little green area here that we would create, um, sometimes, sometimes they, they have their own messes that they come with, and so having the ability to clean it up because they would not want this area carpeted, um, they felt like that would be better as well. Um, they felt like that would be better as well as just the the ability to to secure the area so that um so that that we could meet the requirements that they have associated with their electronic equipment. Um, so any any place I place a a computer for the sheriff's office, I have to be able to make sure that it's secure and only authorized personnel would have access to that area. Um, they did have some expectations that they'd like to use this area in the back for potentially a workout room. And coordinate some of that with potentially even working with our our neighbors um from the the fire authority to utilize that space too. So that's our green plan. Um, still would wouldn't have to modify the access to the building at all. Uh, individuals would access the front door and they would meet with the representative from the sheriff's office that takes people coming in. It's still an open area, so conversations um when they actually bring individuals into a BAC room, this this room here would not be uh a floor to ceiling wall. It would be a private space, but you could still hear what was going on in there. And so I think that that was important to them uh to be able for safety and security reasons, be able to hear what's going on. So the next
Mark, do you mind if I describe a little bit more on on that one?
No, go for it.
Each commissioner can give their reasonings. Uh, when this first started commissioners, uh when I talked to Mark, I asked him to speak to the other commissioners because we had had questions about uh the actual uh leasing and stuff and and you know, somehow you thought I was getting out in front and I told the commissioners that I had not, I guess everything I had worked on was was solely uh on the side with nothing dedicating for the county. Uh, but with that being said, I went to Mark and I I said, uh, when we were looking at what to do and how to do it because we had time. I went to Mark and told him I would not go down there and meet with the sheriff and and do all this stuff unless I had buy-in from the other commissioner send me to because I didn't want to be trying to come off as doing territorial. So somehow I know we have that miscommunication there, but that's what I was told when I sat down. I went to to work and sit down with the sheriff and go through this. I want to point out the the goals that I was looking at when I did it was number one, the uh to keep it as inexpensive as I could because there is literally uh uh monies that are available for the lease of the land uh to be uh not paid for for two years to cover the construction. So cost was a big factor in uh when I walked through with the sheriff to also find out the highest and best use for the sheriff. I also was looking for the highest and best use for the community, not just the county. Uh, and with that, looking for those uh highest best use for the community was looking at also having common areas that could eventually be used for other things like maybe a county commissioner meeting uh in that area that uh DEM would be on the wall uh on the far side. Uh, but also maybe the future having, uh, yeah, right there. Also in the future, maybe having uh the court be able to do some traffic stuff and and things there uh through a video camera. There was a time where the courts were actually in North Mason. Uh, the goal was to be able to utilize the facility the best we could, but at the same time uh bring and give the availability, even if we didn't fill the rooms to be able to utilize them for uh bringing county services back to North Mason. We used to have some and it's important. I think that we we do get some now. We're a big county. We're a long ways away. Being able to provide opportunities for these people has always been something we've talked about. And I was looking at that when I was looking at the different options. So as I sat with the sheriff, we looked at these here. I want to point out one of the things that we don't talk about, if you look at the very bottom of the uh where the um the garages are now, the very bottom one was actually going to be used for a service bay to be able to bring uh vehicles in and out. So we put up that wall to have a service bay. They can come in, change tires, they can come in, uh, put on chains during the winter. Uh, you know, maybe even up fit and all kinds of other things that could happen and maybe for the parks as well and emergency management uh uh access to be able to provide more services here in the north uh and other than making them go all the way down to the south. The next area up was just a storage area that the sheriff had requested. It isn't as big as important. If you wanted to, the county could still use it for storage, but it makes sense to give them that area for all kinds of different uh abilities to use it. Uh, but we could use it wherever you wanted. The next area up is the next open bay. Uh, that was the idea how they like to be set up. They're set up currently now with an open bay with cubicles. This would give the biggest and and most flexible of use to allow them to be able to service as many uh different law enforcement officers and stuff as they need to for have that they have stationed up there. The side all the way to the left is currently mostly it it doesn't show the line correctly. We'll say uh more than uh two thirds of that is got is either the workout room. And then uh on the top uh third, that is a storage area that's already uh key code lock uh for safety of whatever they're gonna put in there, whether it be uh evidence or weapons or whatever. Currently, the the uh uh fire department uses it for their medical and other things they don't want out in the public. Down at the very bottom of that same unit, uh, they were talking about closing that off so they could have it as a true interview room. So there'd be a wall there, a very inexpensive wall. Most everything we looked at was very inexpensive. The the one thing that you saw up there that uh Mark showed, which was that square, did not go to the ceiling. It would serve as being able to you know, videotape them and and do some other things as well as as testing them for the different uh chemicals and the like. And it seemed smartest and best to have it right at the access, right through the door as they first come in. With all this, you also go up above, and this was the area where the first green lines are up on top. That's where the public comes in. That would be a area where they can access now, just like they do now. The sheriff's department has a volunteer area that that uh deals with the public right there. But staff could also deal with them. The next green thing over to the left there uh would be uh both jointly used by the volunteers, but this room would have, just like they have currently now in the current facility, would have the ability to have a a window so they can see everything going on up front just like they can now and see everything going on into the facility just like they can now for dealing with anything that may happen or come up with the officers. It also uh this plan allows for access for the public to be able to use the bathrooms and stuff like that without having to go all the way through the facility. The uh if we keep going up on top, moving forward up above, that's where the community area is where they come in and they meet uh at that one uh um bench out there in front, the the one uh uh countertop. And that would allow people to meet with our county people that are not the law enforcement. It would also allow for law enforcement to be able to take some of the paperwork and put it in a open box to be shipped out throughout the county or for us to do the same for them if they needed be, if we had staff in there at the time, but did not have to have staff totally. Uh, by utilizing this plan, you also, like I said, have access to the bathrooms. But you have a a much greater use also of being able to keep uh the current structures. They can have showers and stuff in case of emergency management, in case they get into something, but also for uh DEM. Now, if we go ahead and go to the left of the square he's at now, that would be a common area where they already could use for training and stuff. It would be a a open. That's not part of the sealed part for the sheriff's department. So they'd be able to go in there and have different trainings and the like. And it's right next to the kitchen, which is on the right, which would be another common area for everybody and anybody that's using the facility. Uh, that common area would be used by the sheriff's department, it'd be used by a DEM, it'd be used by any county staff that comes in and fills up these these rooms. But it was important, I think, to everybody to be able to have a good training room for for even, you know, with our planning, uh whether it be uh, you know, building any other staff could utilize that training room. It's already got all the cables and everything in there for it. The next one over would be the D to the right uh or to the left is the DEM room. That's uh would be DEM equipment around the outside of it, but still being able to utilize it as it has been currently used for the last thirty years as a community place to have a community meeting, and they've had a lot of meetings there. This allows for the community to come in uh a- and, you know, us to actually have a Tuesday, fifth Tuesday meeting if we decide to return back to it to have it in our own facility and be able to allow people to really utilize this as the fire department had hoped. When we first started this, it would be a complete use uh for the community that they get the biggest and best use out of it. Now, the the all the rooms up above, all these ones are are very low cost because they're already in existence. We could start to fill them with different things as it goes. We could put one door in from that uh community room, which would leave access to bathrooms, but it could also uh create access for other departments as well as from the front. So you can have a building department in one of those rooms. You can have a couple of those rooms that are just set up for being able to use for whoever comes in. You could have even a coroner who now we have people from the north and the south. Uh, uh, when people pass away, we have a corner that's going you know, to the north, not just uh Jamie. Now, uh, we have two different ones. Be nice if they both had an office where they can access that stuff and do some of the paperwork, maybe even meet with people if they needed to in the north end. Uh, health department could utilize it. The the whole thing's not there. Then nobody can utilize it. If it's already filled, we'll have to build for somebody to utilize it. So with all that being said, we still have storage rooms in the back. I want to point out that I know that when the uh fire department decided to do this and offer this at a rent of two thousand dollars, which is much less than what we're paying currently for much larger space. And let us have that for two years uh rent free, basically, if we utilize it for the construction of it. The greater hope was that it would would completely give the greatest and best service to our community, not just uh the sheriff's department. And it was definitely not just DEM. Those were talked about, but the main thing was to try and bring services back to North Mason, and I know that that's what they're all hoping for. And again, this was something that not only did the sheriff go through a walkthrough to try and find what was best for the sheriff, he brought all his staff in as well, and they came with the understanding agreement that this was a a great plan, a great idea. So I also want to point out, we've only talked about this one time, but that first one bay is be able to service vehicles and keep it as a uh vehicle service area. Uh, and please keep in mind, I know they didn't give us such a discount so that we can turn it into just storage. I don't think that would be respectful for what they gave us. That's my description of of what we did there.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, so the next item I hear here is the orange plan. So the orange plan would uh basically secure everything that you see is orange. Um, and this is where the sheriff would be located within the area uh within the orange parameters. Um, this would keep the bays uh that are currently garage bays as garage bays. Uh, and and then this area would all be specific to sheriff's office, so um not exactly sure where we would put the BAC room, but they would need to have a separate BAC room. Uh, one of the one of the challenges that we might have to overcome here is that uh is how do we secure this area and still provide access to the kitchen for everyone else in the facility? Uh, and that could be accomplished through doing some doors um you know, in in this area and potentially over here in this area uh that individuals could walk around and still access the kitchen if they were there. Um, anything else that I'm missing on this one?
How would they how would they access from the front to the bathrooms, uh citizens?
Um, this bathroom over here is still a bit, whoops, sorry. This is still a a bathroom, so individuals who could come into the building, walk through the kitchen and then access the bathroom back here. This this would be outside of the secure area.
Right, and there's a hallway. I don't think that they don't, I don't believe that they would have to walk through the kitchen. It's
Yeah, there's not a hallway that goes all the way through. We'd have to put a door through the kitchen.
Right in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep. Because the doorway that it currently goes in here, Commissioner Trask, I believe, is right here.
Yeah.
So we could just put in another doorway here.
Right, or you just have a doorway up in front where there's uh, because I, you can see that, if you can't see my marker. Or my there is a
I tried that too, it didn't work.
There is a hallway um in between those rooms, so you could you could actually have another door up there where it says the the um the second office space. You could add a door and a hallway right there. I'm sure Kelly's Kelly's crew is pretty amazing. They could do that as well so that you wouldn't have to go
Oh, are are you talking in in this area?
Uh huh, yeah. So you wouldn't have to go through the kitchen at all. You just, they could, you know, the citizens, public could walk right down the hallway.
And then this 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 currently, so let me kind of try and
So we'd have to put a wall up for the
This right here, this right here is currently a hallway.
Yeah.
Is that the hallway you're referring to?
Yep, yep.
Okay, yep, that is true.
That is a hallway, so so they wouldn't have to go through the kitchen at all.
Yeah.
But we'd have
We would have to put, there there currently is a wall located, so right now as you enter into the facility and go past the front desk, um, you come around and these are three, these are three separate offices currently.
Correct.
Right, so you come back through here and you can access these three offices. Um, this is not accurate because this actually has a wall and is walled off and there's a there is a um a hallway that goes in this area here.
Yeah, we'd have to close off those other two uh, it's it's actually one and a half because it's a weird wall. On the next one over to the right from you, that office there has a weird wall that doesn't go all the way through. So that's actually one office with a pony. It's not a pony wall, it goes all the way to the ceiling, but it stops partway. So we'd have to change that structure, put a wall all the way across for both offices and doors on both of those as well.
This yeah, this would be an open area, correct? So if we access this area, this this, all of this in here um would be would be open. But yes, there is an existing wall right in the middle there um that would have to be demolished.
But we could put a wall all the way across and make those still offices.
We can, absolutely, yeah. So if you wanted to just put a wall in and keep that as a hallway, absolutely could do that. And then we could wall off these and keep them as offices. But this wall right here um would have, it it's currently not all the way down to the to the edge of the building, so we would have to somehow put a wall in there and and coordinate around the window that exists there, but yes. Yep.
I think that was the the old sleeping area, but I could be wrong.
You are correct, actually. That is the old sleeping area.
And then as far as the 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 workout room, the where they want the workout room. I don't know that they would share with with the with North Mason Fire because they have a very nice workout room already in their building, so
Okay.
They would share much.
Maybe they could get into lifting competitions and we could have deputies versus firefighters.
One of the best lines I ever heard, uh, it was with uh Bobak and our 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 guy that worked for us, Hicks. He says, what's the difference between a fireman and a sheriff? And he's looks at him, he looked at Casey, says, everybody wants to be a fireman.
Not me, I don't like running into fires.
And I don't see Kelly on here anymore, but um I have talked with Kelly at length about our different options that we have here. Uh, and so Kelly has talked about just the ability to to remove walls and and put up additional walls is is not, um, none of these are load bearing. And so that's work that him and his staff have done in the past and that they're fairly um comfortable in in doing that now. So with a whatever plan we go with, did you have anything else on this one that you'd like to highlight, Commissioner Trask?
Nope, what you see is what you get.
So then our new plan here, I call it the blue plan. Um, this actually would be and and oh, I don't know if it actually showed it. Oh, shoot. Um, so the so the the areas that you see highlighted in blue here and here are current walls that would be removed. And Commissioner Shudy, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that this front office as you walk in the door right to the right, we would put a window in there so that the clerk that works for the sheriff's office could greet individuals as they came in.
Correct, yeah. So that would be a space for the volunteer uh or or clerical staff um as the sheriff's office sees fit. Uh, that would be open to the lobby area. Um, and would also be accessible from the um open concept squad room uh where those uh two other walls are are taken out. Um, and then directly uh behind the office space for the um uh front desk staff would be a office space for a supervisor in case they have to have uh any kind of uh private or one-on-one meetings with uh with their staff. And so there's there's the ability to utilize that office for a supervisor. And then then moving through the open concept uh squad room where we could have the bullpen sort of set up that they have uh the current uh rental space that we have in Balfour. Uh, there's uh space there that we could use for a BAC room or a interrogation room or video room, uh whatever they want to call it, um to have that equipment in there that would be accessible uh to the squad room in case there was any kind of an incident that they needed to respond to quickly, as well as the same deal with uh up front with the volunteer. If there was a a a person in the lobby that was unruly or needed to be dealt with by a sheriff's deputy, that that would be easily accessible that way as well. Um, and then moving back is the current bathroom there. Um, that would just be addressed for um ADA requirements and and upgraded that way. Um, and then there's another room that would be available that could be secured to use as an evidence room, um have secure storage for any kind of sensitive uh items uh that they need to do there. And then um kind of scrolling up a little bit, Mark. Um, we can put in a partition or, or some cubicle uh, seating there to uh, continue to offer to DOC and Fish and Wildlife uh, as they uh, currently enjoy at the, at the facility that we have there. And then your secure access uh, for the deputies would be in the back there. There's a window um, that can be converted to a, a secure doorway. Um, I think Kelly is working on some estimates for fencing um, to have secure parking in that back area. And so there's, there's that opportunity there. Um, you also see secure entrances um, at the D E M side so that we can have easy access for our law enforcement to get into the D E M room, but not vice versa. Uh, if they need to, um, I believe it down a little bit further, that's just walling that off. Um, and then another secure access point um, for the, for the law enforcement staff there at the bottom and the, um, coming off of the main lobby. So in the, in the main lobby area, you have that open area where the desk sort of is. We can turn that into um, we can turn that into a, a, an open area where there's perhaps, perhaps one of the hoteling stations that Mark mentioned with the kiosk or some other um, mechanism uh, there for folks to do business. And then there's space there for a, a small conference room that would have uh, directly there to the, to the kind of lower left, um, a, a, an office space or conference area where folks wanted to spread out plans or, or go through permitting or planning review with, with our building department. They could do that there. Would also keep the access to um, to the garage there. Uh, secure access, of course, there so that the public couldn't get into it. Um, and then just uh, through there, then just more general county office space uh, that could be used by any of the offices that, that brought forward specific um, office staffing needs for the north end. Public bathrooms also to be ADA improved. Uh, the kitchen remains as is. And then we go back and we have the large common area that can be utilized for public meetings. Um, it'd be a great spot for the elections office during their eighteen day voting period to help people with their ballots or any kind of trainings that the assessor would want to offer based on what the, based on the feedback that they provided. Um, they would have a, a, just a general purpose, multi-use uh, place. And if in the future, we got to a point where we needed to grow more and have uh, additional dedicated space, we could do that. We could do that there either through cubicles or partitions, but I think you can get a lot of value and, and use out of that open area there. And then finally, in the back, we have um, D E M. Uh, that remains unchanged. I think that's pretty consistent between all three of the, the proposals that we're looking at. Um, and then just there, uh, Mark, go back down to the common areas, have a public access um, there that, that we could um, when that common area is in use, that we could allow the public to, to come in that way and have parking in the back area that's separate from the secure area so that people can, people can go in there for any kind of community meetings and that kind of thing. And then these, uh, this set of plans didn't have it dedicated like the other two did, but I just made a note for the weight room, wherever that would go. And the truck bay that would be, you know, accessible to our sheriff's deputies and, and would be in a secure area that um, the public wouldn't have access to. And then um, and then the bays basically as is and, and still available to do uh, any kind of service that the commissioner and Ellen talked about. If they wanted to do that work in there, you'd have, you'd have ample room to do that and um, and room to grow.
So one of the, one of the concerns and, and I wish Kelly was here because he was, he was, talking about it. So we'd actually have to redo some carpet in this area. If we took these walls out and put in new carpet, he's, is a little bit concerned about the wear and tear on carpet that, that that, that, that happens with our deputies in that area. Um, he said carpet tends to be expensive, but he still feels like within any, any one of these would fall within the budget that he had. The majority of costs associated with his seventy-five thousand was fencing off the area in the back, which I don't have plans that kind of show an aerial view of everything. So I apologize. Um, but there is a there, there is a warehouse out behind this building that we would utilize two of those bays. And then there's an area that is gravel beyond that that could be fenced for um, secured storage or or however else we, we would like to use it and, and make it secure.
Something we'd have to get clarification on is whether they're willing to give us that uh, rent for those two years for fencing or what, because originally they had told us it was for uh, building outfits, but
Yes, and I, and I appreciate Commissioner Nellerman coming up with me and talking with um, the, the Bobak and, and, and some of his commissioners in terms of uh, working out the agreement and how we wanted to move forward. And so that was extremely useful and, and they did say that uh, they did say that they're willing to do whatever they need to do or whatever they have uh, within their power to do to, to get the county and some of our services located up here. So that's when they did work out a deal to say um, for the first two years, uh, we could utilize the space rent-free in exchange for improvements that we did. So I, I, I would, I would clarify with Bo that we could include the cost of that secure fencing in the back um, as part of that or not. But we'd be looking at about twenty-four thousand dollars. So it wouldn't cover all of it anyway. I think the twenty-four thousand with any one of these plans, um,
Where, where do you get twenty-four thousand? It's forty-eight.
Wasn't it two thousand dollars a month for two years?
For two years?
Oh, uh, forty-eight thousand, excuse me.
Yeah.
Two years.
I was gonna say, I'm thinking my math was right, but
Yeah, I apologize. Yes, your math is correct for you.
So Com- Commissioners, I know, again, I apologize if it came off that I was trying to do something. I really thought I had uh, the buy-in and the, the uh, reasoning for going out and meeting with the sheriff and everything. Whichever one you decide, I'll be appreciative because no matter what, I want to get services to my community. That's been the goal from this, from the whole time when I was out there working on that for attacks. I've never been for attacks before. I appreciate this if we can go ahead and move forward. I want you to know though, uh, I do know that I tried my best to, to get the most out of it that I could use, not just for today, but for the long future. We may not be able to fill some of those offices, may not even want to, but eventually we will, because that's how it works. Uh, only having just a place just to stop for a moment and not having somebody eventually staff in that it'd be a shame because uh, that's what we had before and we lost it all. We ended up with nothing. Uh, because we used to do that in the little brick building that you have up there in North Mason. The one that I was putting together, I actually, like I said, I walked through with the sheriff. We tried to do the very best we could that would take care of everybody's needs. But I'm not going to complain uh, if you guys decide on one of your other ones. But I honestly believe that the one we put together, working together um, was highest and best used and most cost-effective and allows us to do things at, in time. Uh, we take care of the sheriff's department so they can move immediately, very quickly, because you don't have as much in the way of walls or anything to do. Um, then we can start working on the other stuff as time goes on. But I'll accept your decisions.
So quick question. Do we have to have D E M in the back?
I think that that was pretty, that was a pretty common um, expectation with everyone. Uh, I think it's, it's, that room back there was, was utilized as that type of space um, for all along. And so there's, there's current wiring, I believe, within that area that supports that type of function to be in the back. Um, so we are taking, uh, I'm actually taking TJ up there with Kelly one day.
At the time in the past, Commissioner, that was, as he said, was used mostly for that type of stuff and for emergency uh, management events and emergency manager of trainings and stuff. That's why I did mine was, was there in that building actually. But uh, that has the cabling. It had all the, the stuff to be able to bring in uh, the computers and stuff. That's why it was thought about. Doesn't have to be there though. It just was the best one for access because most of the time they're not going to use it either. So it stays on the wall. And you get to just utilize that area for the meetings and stuff is what we thought about when we were putting that in there.
And there is a door right here, if you can see where I've highlighted it.
And this storage, the storage facility in the back would be closest to that for the, one of the ones holding the D E M equipment. But it doesn't have to be.
Right. So I'm just wondering if the, the sheriff's office, if they need more room? And if they're still wiring for D E M back there? I mean, if there's not wiring for D E M back there. Cause I don't see why, since there are no walls really in, on the uh, I guess if you're looking at the building on the right-hand side, um, none of those are structural? So you could
The way that this building is built, my understanding is that there's not really a structural wall in it. Um, in the sense that it, the, all of the walls that you see there are non-load bearing. Um, they, they were placed because the, the way the structure was built, the structures is the, the span of that area is all supported by the existing um, beams and posts that they have in there. So I think that we could, we really do have the ability to um, to modify things fairly easily.
Right. And, and if we're worried about the, the carpeting, um, D E M doesn't have any carpet in there either. So the common area and D E M, all of that area is carpet-free, I believe. Cause I know that replacing carpet, or if you wanted to take out the carpet, that's a pain in the it's a pain. Because of the blue.
D E M has carpet in it right now or it'd have to be replaced.
Oh, D E M.
The D E M has carpet in it right now back there and it's in pretty tough shape. It would have
Are sweating in D E M.
Commissioner, one of the things that uh, I know I was hoping for, my community was hoping for though, when, with the sheriff's department was have them out front and center. Uh, the reason why is the deterrent factor, the easy access factor, the idea that the people could come in looking for help and have the fire department right next door and have the button right in front. Uh, uh, you know, we can put them around the back, but having them up front I think is always the best way for the community as well. And I know, but, but was that hoping we're going to put some equipment out there to show them that it's happening? So.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't have the sheriff's office in front. Um, cause ob- obviously all three plans has the sheriff, sheriff's office in the front part so that they can be seen. So that, that was not my intent on the D E M room.
So another, another point that I'd like to make about the D E M room is uh, uh, that our emergency management department actually has a grant to outfit that. And so they have the money and, and ability to purchase equipment uh, that they need to put in there to really make it into uh, a, a room that would be able to respond in a disaster situation. So that's kind of nice that we've, we've already got funding secured for that.
Commissioners, would you like to wait for one more week of this plan? Uh, would you like just wait one more week?
The blue, the blue plan, Commissioner.
The, the blue plan, sorry.
I didn't put names on the plan. Blue, yellow, green, orange and blue.
Do we want to just uh, wait for one more week and come back again and?
Yeah.
Next Monday is uh, next, next Monday is Labor Day.
Oh, yeah.
My concern is that I don't want to wait until the eleventh of September to do this. I would like to, to have a decision and move forward. Um, yeah.
Mark, can you make a recommendation of what you would like to see? There's three. Maybe you could just make a recommendation for which one and see how we feel based on your recommendation.
Um, I would, I would throw out the orange plan. I don't like the orange plan. Um, I would, hey, 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 there's no names on these plans. It's orange, they're colors. I believe that blue or or green could work. But um, I, I think that with the and, 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 and the reason I think it could work is because the, both of those plans still reserve a fair amount of space up in this front area. I quit sharing, I apologize. You can really see it best. Both of these plans really provide space in, in this front area for services and, and, and individuals that come in to work, to, to visit this building uh, from the public are definitely going to enter from this door. So super important, I believe, to have, whether it's a, a individual receptionist here or whether it's a county employee in, in this location. Um, and then on the, on the blue plan, um, you can see that, that's, this area is still all reserved for um, county functions. And so having those accessible as they walk in the front door, super important. Either of those plans could work. Uh, Kelly, from a, from a construction and um, whi- which one would be, which one would be easier for you and your staff?
Oh, fish. Um, well, the blue pen is taking walls out, the green fence putting walls in, same.
Is it easier to, is it easier to demo or build?
Of course, I always like to demo. It's always fun to demo. Um, but yeah, I, it, either one plan, yeah, like I said. One's taking them out, one's putting them in. I think both plans are pretty easy. I think uh, pretty enough, easy enough to write a permit for both of them and get it, get it signed off, get it going right away. Um, which is very important, I think, to me, to Mark and to you guys, that we make sure we go through the proper channels and make sure everything's right. So either, either plan to me is just the same.
Now, we don't have anybody from the sheriff's department on, but I do know, I think they've talked to all three of us with their preferences, but I, I still wait to hear, Mark, do you have a preference?
So well, the sheriff's office, I mean, we've gone, the, the green plan was the one that uh, that we've walked through and, and they bought off on. And I, I think that they um, lo- the aspects that they like regarding that plan is that it is more functional for their purpose. Um, and then it, you know, it's, it's so, so yeah, I, I think from a, from a planning um, standpoint or from a buy-in standpoint, and, and it's probably because we have, we've had longer time with the green plan. Uh, but Kelly is, has worked directly with sheriff's office to ensure that that's what they need. So they don't, they, they wouldn't require any changes. They've got buy-off on it. They like it. They'd like to, to move forward with it. Um, and so that one is probably the most vetted, Randy.
Mm-hmm. But do you have
So that would be
I, I myself, I, I want to throw in one last piece. I know when we were looking at it and talking with the sheriff and everything, Kelly had made a statement that stayed with all of us about how it works for uh, for territory with the sheriff's department there. Uh, and once it, it moves, they quite often want to expand. The one plan when we looked at it was with the idea of being able to expand and for a lot of infill for them for a long time to come.
But if If we're worried about, if we're worried about the, the sheriff's office taking space from general, kind of general government, uh, then I think my bias is what it is, but I think at least in the blue plan, you're you're saying, hey, this whole third of the building is yours. It's those secure doors are there. And if we're just going to leave everything else open, um, then I think then that's when you might run into that sort of uh, uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to say, I don't want to be offensive, but you know.
I'm trying hard not to, Commissioner.
You know, I mean, I just think, you know, if, if, but this way, I, I, my thinking at least, I'll just provide my, my rationale for it was hey, we give them, you know, essentially nine hundred or a thousand square feet on that third of the building, secure it from front to back, allow public access up front in a way that provides accessibility for the deputies when they're in the squad room to, to keep an eye on both the B A C room and the, and the public lobby with their volunteer. While also being very clear that we have dedicated office space for general county services and public spaces that are secured so that people aren't you know, messing with them in any way, but that are still, you know, reserved for those, those spaces in a way that um, you know, that, that, that would maximize the, the usability of those spaces while being clear that hey, you're getting a big increase in, in space or usable space or functionality in the sheriff's office, but we're still, we're still really committed to seeing other services up here. And so that was the, that was the way I kind of approached it. Um, and I think, uh, I think it, you know, we're, we're kind of splitting hairs on some of these things. Um, glad that we agree with where D E M is at least, but in the kitchen, I don't think we're having Kelly do any plumbing to move the kitchen around, but
Nope. That's a nice kitchen.
Yeah.
Oh, and Kevin, I, I agree with you. And uh, that was something I thought about at the same time. But going with that, the, the blue plan, it does limit us for future on, on where they can expand without taking the other. When we put this together, it was the idea that if they did have to grow, uh, they can grow internally, right with what, what they already have. There's a lot of room to grow with what they have in that because it was an open floor plan. Uh, and it wouldn't Uh, and it wouldn't be, as they grow, it wouldn't be taken over any of the other stuff. That was kind of the idea when we put it together. And again, it's. It's so flexible to be able to do some more things in there in the future. That was one of the hopes when I sat with the sheriff and 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 Kelly and all those, we talked about all the different options. So again, Mark, your recommendation, I still don't know that we actually got the recommendation.
Oh, you didn't get a recommendation from me because I because I've got three commissioners' options here, but um, you know, I I think that.
No, they're colors, they're colors.
Yeah, they're our colors. Um, so the blue or green actually makes the most sense to me because we are able to to secure it easily. And um, and keep the common space common. Uh, that that could be utilized by anybody in that facility, a- as well as the front desk area being open um for. The public to come in and utilize other county services. So. I I I definitely could create space for them and and make hoteling spaces in any of those um with the green plan. The hoteling spaces for uh our our other county offices and departments could be very specific. So we could kind of dedicate a room specific to environmental health um that they could utilize. They could put uh, I think they need a little refrigerator in there for their water samples and and things of that nature, so. Um.
I have no dog in the fight. I I don't care which way we go with that, but I will say, taking all three of the commissioners through. With the sheriff. I think the sheriff was very responsive. He listened to everybody. He looked at all of it. And at the end of the day, he did say. And I made him write on a piece of paper that this is what he wanted. He did like the. The green plan and said that that would work. Now, he also said that he would be more than happy with either plan with other plan. But uh, he did say at the time, but and with with that being said, that was the only one we had. Actually drawn at that time, but he was very supportive of that. And and when I asked, uh, well, what about this and what about the carpet? He said, no, they didn't want carpet. No, they didn't want no walls. They want to be open. So that's all I have to say on that part.
Is that, is that just on a slab then there, Kelly? So that carpet is just glued down to the existing slab?
Correct.
And it's a pain, it's a pain to to rip up because the glue is really hard to get off. So that would take extra time as well.
So Kelly, would you be putting in the same carpet that we have in here where it's like the squares or are you thinking of something different?
I would put exactly what we have in here, because I have.
We don't have any changes, Commissioner.
It's kind of like painting the outside of a building. It's all blue and gray.
That's right, because isn't the benefit of what you chose for our offices and everywhere else that it, you can, you don't have to remove the whole thing. You, where there's a wear and tear issue, you just.
That is definitely the plan there and that's what we went to.
But you had to first terrace apart first. I remember going through.
I did.
Yeah, it was hell first.
Yeah, so the green plan is was vetted by the sheriff's office is uh accepted by, I hundred percent agree with Kelly. Um, I did have not had an opportunity to sit down with the sheriff and kind of walk through the blue plan. Um, if that's something that you would like us to do, we could definitely. Corral the sheriff and walk him up there and go through that and get his preference on what side he would like. Um, so if that's, if that's something that you'd like to do, we could do and I could, I could bring back. Um, that information individually to each commissioner and then make a decision and move forward.
So we could go back to waiting a week or Commissioner Trask, you can just make a decision.
Well, yeah, Commissioner Trask, do you have a preference?
Yeah, honestly, I would like to see, I I would like both plans submitted to the the sheriff's office. Maybe him and Travis and maybe one of the officers that's up there in the Belfair area. And have them take a look at the, since the orange plan was knocked out, um, the blue, have him look at the blue and the green plan. And then all you have to do is come back and just say, I mean, it's not Daisy Channing or anything like that, but just come back and say this. This is what they preferred. And and that way we have input from them. Moving forward.
If they come back with a third option, they'll throw a rock at them.
Yeah, so um, Kelly, we have a schedule on Thursday of this week.
We're going up Thursday at eight o'clock.
Maybe we could uh wait, maybe we could get the the sheriff if he's available or. Yeah, I'd I'd like to get the sheriff to come up there and walk through the blue plan and kind of show him what it looks like and see what his feelings are on it.
We're going to be there already, Thursday at eight o'clock.
So I will coordinate with Sheriff Spurling and and see if he can get up there. Uh, and then I will bring that information back individually to commissioners. And then if the commissioners are comfortable with it. Um, I could make the decision and and then just let you know on the eleventh what decision was made.
Thanks for me.
Two.
Okay.
I got cable coming up pretty soon, guys, so I don't mean to rush you through.
No, it's I've we've I'm I'm wanting to rush because I really need to get Kelly and his crew lined out so that they can start on this. And they can get him moved out of their existing facility and that facility. Brought back to its original condition before we leave. So super important to give them the time to do that, so. Alright, that's all I have for you, commissioners.
That was, that was plenty. Alright, well, that brings us to the end of our um agenda. Anything, anything, anybody commissioners want to say before we meet tomorrow morning?
Just to comment, uh, the the prosecuting attorneys got back to me and I'm sure he got back to you, so for the public to know. There's already state laws in place to take care of or to do something with the uh people that are stealing uh from the utilities like that. They're going to look at other options, maybe for maybe helping to train some of our law enforcement, but maybe. We all get together and and bring some some ideas to try and stop it because it is so bad, not under control. But I appreciate them getting back to us as quickly as they did. And I just wanted to let you know that it wasn't dropped by anybody.
Excellent, thanks for the follow-up on that.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
And if the other commissioners are interested in the feedback uh that we received from prosecuting attorney's office, I could definitely forward that to you so you guys can see.
I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, we are adjourned. Stay, see you in the morning.
Thank you.